Right folks, five thirty. Declare our first meeting for two zero twenty four open and welcome back everybody. Hope you've all had a recovery period set for a very, very busy year ahead of us. As part of our new format this year, our Welcome to Country. And continuing with our new format. On behalf of all the elected members here. We, the Wyla council members, commit to serving the community of which we are a part. And will work together diligently and collaboratively to create a prosperous future in which we can all share. Our obituary notices. For those who wish. Followed by a moment's silence. And we respect past Wyla members. Fay Swan. Barry Kane. Natrina Dunn. Jodie Cheeseman. David Crawford. David Cordingly. Barry Darby. Eero Berg. And our former councillor Bruce Lido. Thank you. Our attendance record, we have no apologies. Councillor Campbell is on her way, she will be here. We have no leave of absence. Item five, council member executive declarations, conflicts of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest they need to declare? No conflict of interest, thank you. Any gifts or benefits to report? Thank you. Neil. Item six, six points one, confirmation of the minutes of the previous ordinary council meeting held on Monday eleventh of December. Move councillor Knox, second to councillor Simpson. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Carrie, thank you. Item six point two, confirmation of the minutes of the special council meeting held on Tuesday twelfth of December twenty twenty three. Do I have a mover? Move councillor Simpson, second to councillor Todd. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Carrie, thank you. Item seven, matters adjourned or laid on the table, we have nil. Eight deputations, we have nil. Nine petitions, we have nil. Ten public question time. Trying to work out with or without glasses, think I need new glasses. Just slightly. I can probably manage that. Yes. Now we have a number of questions from a resident, Mr Nick Antonio, to do with the Northern coastline. Question one, can you please provide an update on the Northern coastline master plan committee? The Northern coastline working group last met on Thursday sixteenth of February twenty twenty three. The projects were on hold due to Iluat negotiations. What is the update? The answer. Council has engaged with the Bungala Determination Aboriginal Corporation to identify a process to continue with the project work. This work continues and it is a work in progress. Council recognise and respect that BDAC is one of the busiest determination proponents of all native title determinants, given sufficient public and private sector development proposals on their lands. Council are also aware BDAC has recently had a change in leadership. Question two, in relation to to the item listed. In relation to the items listed on item ten point one, question three. What is council's intention of undertaking and completing these projects? It is from my understanding seventy five to eighty percent of planning work in relation to these projects has been completed and was all dependent on the Iluat. Total of thirteen projects awaiting Iluat negotiations. Answer, it is council's intention to progress these works once an Iluat has been negotiated. Appropriate grant funding will be sought at this time to get the most from council's contribution. Question three. Oops. Council has, question three, council has seven hundred thousand dollars allocation for projects in the future for the northern coastline. Will this money be for the NCMP committee to propose ideas for expenditure? Answer. The funds in question are those put aside to deliver on the campsite projects outlined in question two above. At the current time, council is undertaking joint investigations with the state government on improvements to facilities around the cuttlefish dive sites due to the risks associated with current activities. It is envisaged that some of these funds will be used to deliver on improvements over the next two cuttlefish aggregation seasons. Funds for the campsites will then be rebudgeted as appropriate based on the progress of the Iluat. Question four. Has any councillor followed up the questions asked at the meeting twentieth of November twenty twenty three with council staff? A number of councillors have contacted administration regarding matters associated with the northern coastline, Point Lowly and Cuttlefish Drive since twentieth of November twenty twenty three. Question five. What are the internal policies and procedures for the project management to ensure projects are delivered on time and money is not left unclaimed? Counsel has multiple approaches to ensure projects are delivered on time and money is not left unclaimed. These include council's budget management and review policy. The policy sets out a reporting regime consistent with the requirements of the Local Government Act nineteen ninety nine, as well as the process to be adopted for the approval of variations outside of the scope of council's budget. This policy includes a requirement for project managers to report at a minimum at the mid-year budget review on all council-approved major projects. In detail, providing a full review of the status of projects, current expenditure and revenue and current stage of completion. Quarterly and monthly budget reporting also provide project updates showing for each project budget. Actual costs, total committed, at what stage the project is at, the percentage spent, percentage complete, expected completion. Major projects over one million dollars are reported monthly and all projects over one hundred thousand dollars are reported quarterly. Question six. Eight hundred and forty thousand dollars was established, was essentially forfeited due to the lack of Iluat negotiations. Has the council internally reviewed this mistake? Does the council take responsibility for the loss of the grant money? Answer. Future projects along the coastline will take into account the impacts of native title on planning processes. Had the native title issues been fully appreciated at the time, the campsite works would have been excluded from the local government infrastructure partnership programme, grant application, that was provided by the state government as COVID nineteen stimulus funding. These works will instead be considered in future grant applications. Question seven. Was an extension applied for in relation to the grant money? If not, why? The answer. Council had in-depth discussions with the Department of Treasury and Finance around the options for the grant agreement. The extended timeframe required to negotiate an Iluat was beyond the final deadline for LGIPP and the minister was not willing to extend this any further. Since that time, council has engaged multiple state government agencies regarding the Cuttlefish Dive Site and the Northern Coastline and are confident of being able to access further funding once an Iluat is in place. Question eight. In relation to the Clean Seas upfront payment of forty thousand dollars, the reply received at the twentieth of November meeting, please see the attached extracts. I will state information first and then proceed with a question to context so context is provided. Clean Seas stated at numerous community consultation events of the upfront money contribution. Although the MOU was not signed, these promises were made by Clean Seas both in the council chamber, ordinary meeting and at community events. Clean Seas operated daily from the Point Lowly Marina and also the landing, weekly as required. Clean Seas advised they were not operating from the Point Purie Marina due to not being suitable at the time. There was damage done to the Lowly Marina during this period. Council stated they have not received any funds from Clean Seas. So with the information provided now, does the Wyla council have any intention of requesting the forty six, forty thousand dollars upfront contributions from Clean Seas? The answer, council has contacted Clean Seas to determine what their current position is in relation to this commitment. As the licence agreement was never entered into by Clean Seas, there is no legally enforceable agreement in place. That said, once Clean Seas' current position is confirmed, a report will be provided to council to determine what action council wishes to pursue, if any. Question nine. What is the update on the council investigations of capital works of the Point Lowly Marina? There are numerous safety concerns, both while launching a boat and structural concerns adjacent to the marina. When is the last? When the last time, sorry, when is the last time the council had the marina inspected for compliance? Answer. Council will soon release an early contractor involvement process for dredging works at both Wyla and Point Lowly Marinas, as well as the removal of the loading dock at Point Lowly Marina. A capital works programme for both marinas has been developed based on underwater inspections undertaken in late twenty twenty one. The works at Wyla Marina were prioritised and included in a grant application to the state government, the outcome of which is yet to be announced. It is planned to complete a separate grant application for Point Lowly Marina and seek separate approvals. EPA, coastal protection and DIT. From removal of, for removal of the loading dock that requires an environmental management plan. That completes the questions on notice. Thank you. Item eleven, council member activities. You have a list there scrolling through. If anybody wishes to make a brief comment or add to any of those. Now is your opportunity. Otherwise, we'll take them as read and thank you for your good support starting the year. Thank you, council members. Item twelve. Presentations. Twelve point one, KESAB. We have a presentation. Probably Resource Recovery Education Office of KESAB. Ms Will Hampton. Hope I've got it right. Take the pledge, waste education programme. Would you step forward please? Now if any of our other directors wish to give any background information for this. Oh, welcome.
Have I got a presentation loaded somewhere? Thank you very much. Thank you for making some time for me today to come and speak to you. My name's Eloise and I work for an organisation for KESAB. Just as a starting point, can I have a show of hands if you've heard of KESAB before? Awesome, a few people. Hopefully because we've already done some work with Wyla City Council, maybe because you've heard of us from previous things around the place, we used to do a lot in the space of reducing litter and now we do a lot in the space of waste education. So we have worked on a few projects with Wyla City Council. Most, most recently has been a set of projects that started in twenty twenty two with a curbside waste audit. So that was looking at residential waste that residents are putting out on the curb for collection, weekly, fortnightly, and exactly what people are putting in their bins each week for collection. So we looked at a hundred households across the various suburbs in Wyla. We looked at their recycling, their organics and their landfill material. And up on the screen at the moment, we can see the composition of those different streams. And what this demonstrates is really that there's, there's some room for improvement, there are some things that need to change. And we have taken a few steps towards making those changes, hopefully with measurable impact in the future. So on the far left, we can see our recycling bins. And the really notable thing here is that thirty eight percent of what was in those recycling bins was considered contamination. So only sixty two percent of that material was stuff that our resource recovery facilities, the places that sort that material are willing to send off to other facilities, other companies to be processed into new, new items or new materials. So there's a huge amount of contamination going into the bins at the moment. Some of that will be bagged, bagged recycling rather. So if recycling is contained within a plastic bag and then put in the yellow recycling bin, that's considered contamination because the sorting processes don't like dealing with stuff in bags. Things, we found things like textiles, which also can't be recycled through that pathway, things like e-waste, which need to go to a special collection point. And then there would have been a whole lot of miscellaneous things and potentially a couple of recycling bins that were just being used as an overflow for landfill material. Our organics was really not too bad, four percent, doing all right there, four percent contamination, I should say. And our landfill contained twelve percent of material that could have gone in recycling. It was almost half organic material. So by weight, almost half of what was going into landfill bins in twenty twenty two was material that could have gone in the green bins or in people's home composting systems. So that's garden waste included, but a huge amount of that will have been food scraps because food weighs a lot. So it makes up a huge portion of that by weight. So food scraps, including uneaten food, because an awful lot of people throw away a lot of foods that they haven't even touched. So just a quick start, Australian households generally throw away a fifth of the food that they bring into the household. So if you've gone to the shops and bought five bags of shopping, one of them is going straight in the bin essentially. And if you're thinking, I definitely do not waste that much food at home, it just means there are a lot of people that waste a whole lot more. So there are some really big education pieces to do there around how people can have less stuff they need to put in the bin in the first place. Thank you. Next slide please. So twenty twenty two, we did our waste order. This is my team digging through all the dirty stuff. And we sorted into over fifty different categories. So it's a really, really detailed granular look at what people are putting in their bins. Just a quick recap in case people in the room aren't sure. Which bin provides some great resources to tell people what to put in each of their bins? This is their green bin poster. So our rule for the green bin is if it grows, it goes. So things that have been growing or once been alive or come from something growing or alive can go straight in the green bin. So all of our food scraps, meat, seafood, cooked food included, all of that can go in there. Coffee grounds, tissues, kitchen towel, shredded paper as well, all sorts. Things that we definitely don't want in there, things like plastic bags, food contained within its plastic packaging. Dirt and rocks while they've come from the garden, they're not technically compostable, so we don't want them in there either. Next slide please. Similarly, our yellow bin, there's a really clear definition of what can and what really shouldn't be going in there. So our main recyclables are things like hard plastic containers, so your milk bottles, ice cream containers, glass bottles and jars, metal items including tin or steel things, so empty aerosols, cans, aluminium foil, paper and cardboard if it's nice and clean and cartons. Beautiful, next slide please. Yes. Yeah, I'm happy to.
Oh, there we go. I've been pushing the wrong button. My apologies there. Just a quick question. So broken glass can't go in the recycle bin. Why is that?
Once glass is broken, it's really hard to separate it from all the other materials in your recycling bin. So if you think about all of those things being needing to be sorted into the different categories, I can send through some little videos of how that happens. But the bigger something is that easier it is to sort out. A lot of that is happening with machines now rather than people. Some of it does happen with people as well. So there's optical sorting with robots and bits and pieces and then there are people working on conveyor belts. The broken glass will end up between bits of paper, it'll end up inside plastic containers, it'll end up squished between things of all different materials. And it's really hard to recover. If I do recover those glass finds, the broken glass, which they tend to, the facilities, it's usually full of other bits of tiny stuff, so little bottle caps, bits of tiny paper, all sorts of bits and pieces. Next, when you're ready, thank you. Following the audit, we did come and do an education programme and that was with schools and also with community groups. We engaged over five hundred different community members through the schools and through community workshops, education sessions. And this face-to-face education is really vital in getting people on board and getting people to understand why recycling and resource separation at the source, so in people's homes, is really important. So it can be quite a detached idea. People put things in the bins, the bins go away and then they don't have to think about them again. Through this education and it's usually through fun, interactive things, so it's not always just me standing in front of a group of people telling them you need to do this X, Y and Z, where you've usually got some sort of fun, interactive, hands-on activity which sets the context for why it's really important to do the right thing. So it's not just about putting the right things in the right bins, it's about reducing the amount of resources we're using in the first place. So there are, there are less things that we have to put into bins in the first place. So it might be making beeswax wraps, which is an alternative to single-use packaging. So getting rid of things like cling wrap and ziploc bags and all those things that are in lunchboxes really, really often. And sort of different activities like that. So these were really, really vital opportunities to touch base with the community and see what was important to people, what people really valued in terms of learning about waste and resource management. The schools were really, really excited to have the opportunity to do a council-funded programme like this because it's really hard for the regional areas, as you'd know, to get access to some of the things that, you know, schools in Adelaide can have their pick on any day of the week. So they were so excited about it. We had lots of great feedback and a few have been in touch again leading up to this year to find out what, if anything, they can access in the future. So there's definite interest. In terms of community education, we took a couple of groups of people out to see the Violia Transfer Station. We had some of the people there speak to us. And we also went out to the Pete's Organics Processing Facility to see what happens there. And there were both some really eye-opening moments for residents to see the scale on which things happen. So again, it's really easy to put the stuff in your bin and you know that your bin goes out every week and you sort of might drive past other people's bins and notice, oh yep, it's bin day, people have put their bins out. But you don't have an idea of the scale of it until you see that material in a big pile, sitting, waiting to be collected by a truck or waiting to be sorted. And particularly when we went to Violia, looking at the recycling pile, seeing all the things in there that shouldn't be there, looking at the landfill pile and seeing all of the recyclable things, all of the organic things. And over at Pete's, also seeing how much contamination was in those piles of green waste. Sometimes they get loads through and they tip it out the truck and they look at it and they say, we can't do anything with this. It's not worth composting it because there is so much contamination in there. So there's a real need for people to understand in the community that they've got a role to play in doing the right thing and making sure that these resources can be managed really well. And having Pete's processing locally is really exciting because that stuff doesn't have to transport, be transported very far. So it's really, really good thing that they're, they're up here. That's great. Next slide please. That brings us to Take the Pledge. So it's the next step in council's efforts to educate the community and it's sort of stepping it up a little bit because it's asking something of residents rather than just providing and coming out and doing things for people. So it's based on community-based social marketing or CBSM. And it's really appealing to community members' want or desire to do the right thing. So when we speak to people in the community, most people are telling me, I really want to do the right thing. And I thought I was, is this the right thing? Should I be doing this? Oh no, I've just learnt that I shouldn't have been doing that thing and I'm so glad that I've learnt that. So most people want to do the right thing. Take the pledge is asking community members to pledge to put the right things in the right bins. So if someone registers for the pledge, they are committing to putting all of their recyclable things in the recycling bin. They're committing to putting all organic material in the organic spin. So it's an active active commitment to making the right choices and making more active choices about where things end up. Demonstrates understanding as well. So when you commit to something, you want to understand what you're committing to really. So hopefully generating some more questions around what the right thing actually is. Next slide please. We'll be speaking to various people in the community about the Take the Pledge programme over the course of the week. So we're doing a big launch at the Australia Day event on Friday. I'm hoping to get in to speak to some schools during their Week Zero staff meetings as well. In the future, we're looking to get to speak to community groups. It's a bit of a busy time for some of them at the moment or they're not active at the moment. But community groups are a really great way to reach more people in the community and educate further. On a not-so-hot day, we'd love to do some door-to-door work as well. So sometimes in a council area, we will pick a certain area to target, we'll go door-to-door, we'll offer a kitchen caddy, we'll ask if they've got any questions about what they should be putting in their bins, if they've got any concerns about how things work and then ask them if they would like to pledge to do the right thing, sign up to take the pledge. Next slide please. It's a really easy process to get signed up. So the page on the website is now live. So people can follow a little QR code, not the one that's on the screen because that's an example for our stickers, which I'll speak about in a moment. We've got these little flyers that have got a QR code and I'll send them around at the end. Um we've got these little flyers that have got a QR code and I'll send them around at the end so that you can all sign up, as I'm sure you're eager to. Um so you can sign up by the website or you can sign up on paper. So we'll have some paper sign-up sheets when we're speaking to community groups in case there are people who are a little less tech savvy. Once people are signed up, they'll receive an information pack about the programme, going through all the particulars. Um and a sticker or two stickers to put on their bins as a reminder of what should be going in each bin, but also with a little link or a QR code to the signup page so that their neighbours wandering around go, oh, what's that sticker? I haven't seen one of them before. What's that all about? I don't have one of them. Did everyone get one? Did I miss out on something? Um and hopefully they look a little bit closer and they go, oh, there's a, it says I can put food in my green bin. I didn't know about that. Um and maybe they go a bit further and go through the QR code to sign up for the programme. We've, we had a couple of setbacks in getting our stickers designed, with there's been a bit of back and forth with a few different people. We're hoping we're on track now. We are on track. What I've got up here is an example from a different council. So it's an example of what our sticker might look like when it arrives. Um with some tips about what sorts of things can go in our green bin and also an invitation for other people to take the pledge. Next slide, please. After people have taken the pledge, we'll let them know when they sign up that there will be some random bin inspections on collection day. So it'll be a monthly inspection. Um twenty random households will be selected each month. And we'll just have a really quick look in the tops of their bins. So it's not emptying it out or anything, it's just having a little look in the top to see whether it's largely the right things in the right bins. If it's a recycling day, if we lift the lids, we can't see any recycling in the landfill bin, the red-lidded bin. And we can see that there's no contamination in the yellow-lidded recycling bin. Um then a big thumbs up for them. And they could win a prize. So each um inspection round, there'll be four people who can be winners. Um and they can win a bag of Peats compost and about just either the local minor tent or the Wayala Garden Centre. So there's a little bit of an incentive there if people are doing the right thing, if people need more of an incentive than just the good feeling of doing the right thing. As I've mentioned, the bin stickers will promote the programme but also remind residents what they should be putting in their bins. Moving forward, we'd love to find some community champions, so some people who are going above and beyond um and have some tips that can help locals to further reduce waste. Um reminders of how to put the right things in the right places, how to pack a nude food lunchbox or something like that. Um it's really nice to have these community faces that people can identify with and recognise um as supporters of doing the right thing and putting the right things in the right bins. Before I ask what you think we can do further, I just want to speak briefly about the benefits of putting the right things in the right bins. So when people put things in the right bins, it reduces the amount of stuff that has to be sent to landfill. So we saw when I went up on my, one of my first slides with the composition of our bins, there was relatively little material in the landfill bin that had to be there. Now, South Australia has a really big landfill levy, which, uh expensive landfill levy, I should say, one of the most expensive in the country, which means that you have to pay a lot of money when you send stuff to landfill. If some of that stuff is recyclable or compostable, then you're wasting money sending stuff to landfill that could have gone somewhere else. That it's not just saving the resources, which is why I get excited about it, because we don't need to take more from the environment than we already do. Um but there are also financial impacts and financial savings associated with the right things being in the right bins. Of course, it's really important environmentally to have less load on our environment. There's a really nice social aspect as well because community members can share their ideas, they can share what they're doing, share their tips and tricks, talk about their chickens, talk about all the great things that they're putting into their compost instead of putting into the landfill bin tips for saving food, tips for packaging or storing things in a way that doesn't need single-use packaging. So lots of beautiful things. On my next slide, I've got um a big one of our little flyer here, and I'll give them around anyway. Um we would love for you to all sign up so that you know what it's all about and so that you can tell other people what it's about. So we'll hand these around. Um if anyone's got any questions, I'm really happy to answer them, be it now or in an email later on, either is totally fine. Um and if you've got any ideas or any contacts for groups that you think we should be speaking to or groups you think we should be engaging and getting on board, please also let me know. Um otherwise, thank you very, very much for listening. Um and hope to see some some names on our signup pages. Thank you very much. And Truroco is going to come up and speak a few words.
I'm glad to say, uh we ordered five hundred kitchen caddies and five hundred uh compostable bags and we received them last week. So they are ready to go. So I would like to invite you all, if you haven't started, uh put your food scrap and compostable stuff in the green bin, uh grab a kitchen caddy and a free uh bags and start your food waste collection by now and sign up for the project. And um it would be great if you can share this information through your social media and your community groups and friends and families and kids. It would be great to having more registration and more diversion. And um as well as, uh we are uh planning to do mini video clips to promote the programme and promote uh less waste in landfill and more food waste diversion. I would like to invite you all to join for this video with your families and kids to show your support and your commitment uh for more waste diversion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I can say that council and the city has had a close relationship with KESAB with its many programmes for a good forty-five, fifty years, since the very early days of KESAB Tidy Towns, which is well before your time. And I have an admission to make, my wife came back from Adelaide, we've got a Salisbury council being in our kitchen now and a whole heap of compassionate compostable bags. She obviously went somewhere and got them down there free. But no, thank you very much for that. And I do look forward to us and the city certainly taking the pledge. Thank you.
I just have a quick.
Yes, Catherine. Uh councillor Campbell.
Thank you, ma'am. Um I was just wondering, um you've said you wanted people to do videos and things like that. Do you have a hashtag? The social media campaign for that, so you can encourage people to use the hashtag and get that rolling?
If we haven't started any videos or that that sort of mini clips or anything yet, but we are planning to do the mini clips, then we can post through our social media and create a mini hashtag or anything else. And yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, ma'am. Sorry. Yes, yeah. Is there a statewide um competition running or is it just a local thing where residents can get a prize if they do the right thing? I'm just thinking from an incentive to bring the community together as a team of Wayala. Is that on the cards or is that happening? Or is it just a localised individuals that can be in the running?
So this is localised, but I love the sound of something bigger. There are multiple councils that run a similar Take the Pledge programme. So different councils around South Australia include Unley um in Metro Adelaide and also Port Perry and the Copper Coast. Um so I I like the idea. I don't know if that can go further as a competition between different councils that have a pledge programme. It would definitely need some um consistency across the programmes, but for now, just local.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Sorry, I haven't forgotten to uh mention about the fridge magnets. He got heaps of um best tips fridge magnet received from Green Industries. I will leave them in that table, then you can collect and put on your fridges. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Item thirteen, committee reports. We have nil, we have none. Item fourteen, reports from council offices, fourteen point one, the office of the chief executive, fourteen point one point one. The CEO's action report. We'll take it as read.
Uh if I may.
Yes.
Yes, if you can take the written report um as read, but I did want to provide um councillors with an update on a couple of matters. Um on your table tonight or in the uh CEO's report, um there's reference to multiple meetings that have been had regarding things like the six million dollars. Um uh state election commitments with the likes of um Eddie Hughes, our state MP. Um uh Minister uh Hilliard, uh which the mayor will talk about um when he presents his list of engagements later. Um Department of Premier Cabinet, et cetera, et cetera. Um on the table for your information, uh we have sent a letter uh to our state member uh today uh which um details a number of considerations that we believe the state needs to apply in determining um where a Recon Sport Hub should be located and how the six million dollar um funding commitment um is is um contributed to or attributed to different codes. Um so I encourage you to have a look at that. It's a quite a detailed report. Um and behind that, um sorry, letter, and behind that letter, um as recently as Friday afternoon, uh we received a response from Westland United Soccer Club regarding uh their their views in terms of what their needs are in terms of um uh their soccer club. Um and earlier today, we also received some correspondence from uh Wayala Junior Soccer Association also articulating what their um needs or aspirations are. Um the administration will be providing response to those two clubs tomorrow, um which will pick up some of the key elements that are listed in the letter to um the minister. Um and we, sorry, to our state member. And we also are having ongoing discussion with a number of state government agencies, including Department of Premier Cabinet and Department of Recon Sport, amongst others, um in relation to this subject. So I just wanted to give elected members an update in terms of uh that that item. Um thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Seagull. Any questions there? Is councillor border?
The Soloski, do we, is it possible to get some dates in there? Like, I understand it's been passed to the RDA um EP just to keep the ball rolling there. I know that that once that goes outside the council's sort of jurisdiction, that's their ball. But just to have some sort of dates of, just to have some sort of dates of when those follow-ups will will happen would be great. Thank you. And then also, um just in regards to, I'm not sure how much you can share with us, but the meeting's on the eighteenth of December. Um regarding development opportunities, is there much you can add around those? All right. Um so that was with a gentleman by the name of Charles Musa. I understand that a number of elected members may have met Charles at recent WTF, um What's the Future Community Plan forums. Uh so I met um with Charles to understand what um what's what his interests are and what sort of development he's interested in doing uh in Wayala. So it was essentially a meeting break because I didn't see him at the WTF forum. Um so it was really just an introductory um conversation. I shared with him some of the things that are on the horizon in terms of Wayala's um, you know, potential job numbers and and population um increase, et cetera, et cetera. Um talked a bit about the Wayala Business and Tourism Association, suggested he should um join up um with that association. So yeah, it was a bit reasonably broad-reaching conversation just to give him some insights about who we are and what's in, what's on the horizon. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Knox.
I was going to ask about the solar scheme, but that's off the table now, thanks to councillor border. But I have one other question. The um the, I think it was a motion, there were not a question about weekly green waste collections. How are we going with that?
Um so through the mayor, I think that one's a work in progress. We haven't got an update to provide just yet. Um I did note councillor border's comments about having some timeframes listed in our reports, and the mayor also raised that with me earlier today. So for future reports, we'll try to be more prescriptive in terms of timeframes uh for some of these to be brought back to council.
Well, my philosophy is if um if a thing is going to take more than one month, at least you should put a a monthly report in so you can keep you up to date with what's going on.
Councillor Porter, my apologies. I had one other question regarding the um the delivery unit. Um how did that meeting go? Is there any more sort of movement forwards on the Wayala birthing unit? That discussion? So that's the meeting on the Tuesday, the ninth of January. That's the one, yes. Yeah. Um just checking because I also met with the Department of Premier Cabinet's election delivery unit. So I just want to make sure I got the right delivery um group. So um so that was a good conversation. Um little bit of uh um sort of cross-communication with our diary. So the mayor was meant to um also be invited to that meeting. And unfortunately, that didn't quite happen. But um what's the director of nursing? Um um Miss Ekit and the new director of midwifery, um Charlotte Groves, um confirmed was that they are very happy to come and provide um the elected member group with a briefing at a workshop. Uh we're in the process of organising that, probably sometime in in February. Um the new director of midwifery now is on deck. They are doing active um efforts to recruit uh midwives um to the service to support the reopening of the um um the unit in Wayala. The director has got a broader remit than for the the region, uh Far North Region. However, having said that, um given the importance of Wayala, um that um Charlotte is actually working full-time uh in Wayala. Um so five days a week. Um and uh essentially, they they are working through trying to get more resources actually on the ground, emphasise that it's not a simple process, which we understand. Um but I took great um confidence that they are very active in terms of trying to secure um more trained nurses to um come to Wayala. Um and also um further discussions with the University of South Australia regarding getting more nurses trained in regions, particularly around um uh midwifery. So won't happen overnight, but um they are actively working to get the critical numbers so that they can reopen that service. And I'm sure by the time they come to present to council, they'll have some further updates um to provide at that time.
Thank you. No further questions. I have one, Seagull, and that is an update. We have an update on the Plaza Youth situation thing was all full-on at the time.
I'll defer to the director of corporate services to provide a response on this one.
Uh yes, thank you, through the mayor. Um Plaza Youth have been making inquiries in the context of seeking funding from uh different financial institutions. Um they have actually received an extension to their current lease of the property. So the urgency from a timeframe point of view has actually been dealt with. Um we are meeting and seeking to meet again with Plaza Youth next week to have a conversation around uh applications for a loan through to um a a number of different financial institutions, at which time, um you know, we will provide some advice to them in terms of the the nature of information to be presented to the financial institutions such as um financial statements, et cetera. And we have prepared a letter which is advising the financial institutions that the council is prepared to go guarantee uh for the money's lent or for fifty thousand dollars of the of the loan um uh that is made.
Thank you, Kenny. There's no further questions. Somebody care to, Deputy Mayor Pond, you're moving the report receipt of seconded by councillor Westerman. I'll put the motion, those in favour. There goes Kerry. Thank you. Fourteen point one point two, the Air Peninsula Local Government Association notice a motion from the district councillor at Elliston to do with great white shark attacks. Now, before I open it up to discussion, uh I'd like to get in first with you there. I would like to see that matter deferred with the greatest of respect to the recommendation that was foreshadowed at the meeting at Coffin Bay, that it was coming forward. There is a view from different local governments within the area, the most recent being the mayor from Port Lincoln as well, that we need more balanced information, pro and against. Uh it was delivered with a great deal of emotion and it is an emotion motive issue. Do believe we need further information, even if that puts back a decision. Uh, do believe we need further information, even if that puts back a decision at the next E P L G A meeting. Even uh Peter Scott, the E P L G A executive officer. Has already organised at the next meeting at Woodne to have other presentations with data for everybody to consider. I think it is too soon to make a clear black and white decision on that. I would like to see us defer it, get further information and make that also known to the E P L G A that we are looking for that balanced view. I haven't worded a motion, I I must admit, I was discussing it with the C E O today. See, I was just worded it perfectly, if you've got that, that the this matter be deferred until further information is received, which we can present back to you. Yes, so, do I have it? I'm not used to moving motions. Uh, councillor Simpson?
What does the President say, Mayor? Why are we getting involved in this? What's it got to do with us? We can't have any impact.
Well, we need a seconder, then we'll discuss it. That's what Simpson's seconding it?
Yeah, do you want to speak?
Um, I did want to speak.
Before I put the motion, because we are a member of the E P L G A. And a fellow member of the E P L G A has put forward this notice of motion.
I understand that, but you know, what impact are we going to have on that? What what influence are we going to have over what happens in their journey?
It requires, as a member of the E P L G A, doesn't matter what it is.
Yeah, I understand that, but it just.
We need to be part of that discussion. If it was a motion to do with our cuttlefish, you could say, what's the junior got to do with cuttlefish? But they would need to be part of it.
Oh.
It's an E P L, it's been put up by a member of the E P L G A. For the E P L G A, which is all councils on the air peninsula. To support or not support their motion.
Point of order. Who's the mover?
Yes.
Who is the mover?
Not me, I was just making.
There's P S up there.
Alright.
Like, councillor, I'll start again. Councillor Simpson, you're moving that.
I'm moving the deferral, yes.
Alright.
Moving. I move again.
Well, I moved it.
Okay.
And that's why I thought councillor Simpson seconded it.
Okay, I was seconding.
Right. My apologies, councillor.
Point of order.
Yes, yeah, as the C E O said, it's it's a formal motion, there's no further debate date. So I will put the motion, those in favour. Against?
Hang on a sec, sorry, the councillor Knox has just said point of order.
Point of order, I don't know if you can move the resolution.
I'm quite happy to be guided. Yeah, any mayor, sorry, any councillor can move the formal motion at a council meeting. There's nothing that prohibits or restricts the mayor from moving a motion. Uh, mayor spoke to the matter first and in speaking to it has suggested um that the matter should be deferred and has put that to the council. It's been seconded by um councillor's um Simpson. Formal motion um brings the discussion to a head. Um, so there's no further dispute, debate or discussion on the matter. Um, and as it's turned out, that that um resolution was was carried. So that item will now come back to council once we've got some further information.
Thank you, C E O.
May I, may I ask a question?
Yes, certainly, councillor.
I've I've done a bit of research, I'm not going to have an opinion, I've just got a question. I've um done a lot of research, including recent studies and case law. Who, do you, do I forward that to Justin to consider or I don't want to forward it to the wrong person? Thank you.
Right. Yeah, I believe it did. Item fourteen point two, corporate services ordinary reports, fourteen point two point one. Twenty four, twenty five, annual business plan and budget process and parameters. We have a recommendation. C E O, take it as read.
Uh, yes, through the mayor, we, no, we have workshop this um previously with, together with the audit and risk committee back in December. Uh, so this list of recommendations is essentially what has emanated out of that that workshop. And it's now before council to forward formal adoption.
Councillor Knox.
Moving.
Do I have a second there, councillor Simpson? In that case, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Thank you. Fourteen point two point two, the monthly budget report for December twenty twenty three. Again, we have a recommendation. Take it as read. Councillor Boarder, moving, councillor Todd seconding.
Yeah.
I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Thank you. Fourteen point two point three, the rating review for information. Somebody care to move the council notes, the rating review information report, councillor Boarder, seconded councillor Westerman?
Can I make a comment as well? Can I make a comment as well? As I would like to move it, but I also just want to make a comment, just positive feedback. Um, just that the the rating F A Q was fantastic, I thought, um, really comprehensive. And then I went on to the website and checked it. And I noticed that you've got to scroll through a bunch of information to get to the F A Q page. I don't know what the right order would be, but I've just had a bit of feedback that like people couldn't find F A Q. On on that particular one, I know the same format was used for the foreshore development. And of course, people said, have you checked the F A Q on that particular one? They said, uh, can't find it and they didn't scroll down. So I just wonder whether we have a little reference at the top to F A Q scroll down and then. Perhaps the same format is is completely fine, but I just thought it was it was a brilliant F A Q.
Thank you, councillor. So we have a motion moved and seconded, I'll put the uh, put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Thank you. Fourteen point two point four, the audit and risk committee remuneration review. We have a recommendation. Councillor Knox.
I was going to move, but councillor Todd got in ahead of me anyway, just the way they've come up.
Right, so councillor Todd, you're moving that? Seconded councillor Knox, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Thank you. Fourteen point two point five, council member professional development plan. We have a recommendation. This is going to create a small word, so who wants to move that one? Councillor Todd? You're moving that. Councillor Westerman seconded it?
Yeah.
I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Thank you. Fourteen point two point six, local government elections and participation review. We have a recommendation there, have, this has been discussed previously that we were heading this way. Councillor Knox?
Working the recommendation.
Councillor Boarder?
Uh, seconding with a query. The query is that I think there's also not, it's also an opportunity to educate the community about how um they can have their say. So just reading a bit of the um from Minister Brock. That it's wonderful to get people involved, but I think educating people as well in the manner in which they can do that. If I think a Facebook comment is going to get the message across, obviously, that's not the case, as much as the council tried to respond to them. I just see that as an opportunity as well.
Certainly, that aspect will be covered in the workshop for sure.
Wonderful, yep, and I'll second that as well.
Right, we have a mover and a seconder, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Fourteen point two point seven. W T F, what's the future outcomes and next steps? There is a recommendation there. Take it as read unless anybody, councillor Todd? You're moving it, deputy mayor Pond, you're seconding it? In that case, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Thank you. Fourteen point three, city growth ordinary reports, there are nil. Fourteen point four, city infrastructure ordinary reports, there are nil. Item fifteen. Information reports, fifteen point one. Oh, council members, uh, the mayor's list of engagements. I do need to add two to that last Friday. The Fridays are supposed to be quieter and less hassle free, I did two A B C interviews. One very early in the morning, an update of the foreshore master plan and the response from the community and their memories. And then a little bit later, one for, well, both for A B C, one, uh, the foreshore one went statewide regionally. Uh, and then the second one was about the vandalism with the oil. Uh, deliberate spill at Hummock Hill, which uh did keep a lot of people busy. And I must say that everybody involved, the way officers, staff, contractors got on to it. Uh, the potential was very dangerous. Uh, it has been reported to the police. Uh, the cans of cooking oil that were just dumped there, they are been part of the evidence. Whether we'll find whoever did it, but I I must commend everybody uh for the efforts they put in to clean it up. And get the Hummock Hill Road open so quickly. Oh. Yeah, just. Also, I'll give you the heads up that it's still very fluid at the moment. Uh, but when I, the Spencer Gulf Cities mayors uh met with the premier and certain ministers. Month, six weeks ago in Adelaide, uh, the premier did indicate that he wanted to bring up ministers. Uh, to the three cities at some stage in February. As I said, it's very fluid at the moment, but we have been advised that initially, a minister. Well, key cabinet ministers and their C E Os. Uh, will be attending Port Perry, Whala and Port Augusta for economic summits later this month. We have possibly round about the last weekend of the month. We have no other information at this stage. Uh, it's been gradually fed to us as things transpire. So once we know exactly what's going on, you'll be the first to know. But just a heads up that that's coming up towards the end of the month.
Just to, um, just to clarify, that's the end of February, not the end of this month.
Oh, sorry, I'm I'm thinking of February already, my apologies. Yes, I I'm too far ahead, I'm thinking of February, yes, towards the end of February. Right, if there's no further questions, I think I've covered everything. Uh, would somebody care to move the receipt of that report? Move councillor Westerman, seconded councillor Todd. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Thank you. Fifteen point two, city infrastructure, fifteen point two point one, the monthly information report. Quite detailed there.
If I may, mayor, um, given that it is quite a detailed report, if we could ask um Colin Sharp, our manager of um depot. And operational services to provide a bit of a briefing to council on the content.
Certainly.
Thanks.
Everyone here? Yep. Right, mayor, elected members, I'll just touch on a few points of interest from my perspective. You know, being new to this council since February last year and what I've seen and and this report. Um, one of the biggest things that sort of hit me was uh the amount of senseless vandalism. And we all witnessed that in Hummock Hill and the cost. Uh, that alone on Friday was in excess of about ten thousand dollars. So, and you can see the pictures of um the vandalism where they're ripping out our infrastructure. Plus the infrastructure that other state government organisations place in in the region. So it's quite significant, we're on top of it, but it's one of those things that's just kind of frustrating from our point of view, from our perspective. Um, on a good note, the cell street uh irrigation system, we just replaced. And spent a bit of money replacing the filtration system on that, um, looking to extend the longevity and think of the future. And and how much irrigation would input, especially when we're greeting Whala. So that's a good thing, that's that's come into play last week, it's not detailed as much here, but that that um hit a milestone last week and we've got them replaced. Um, another one that'll bring to your attention, the Memorial Oval, Senate tough, um, the gates there. Um, Bruce, our metalwork smithman down at the the depot there, did a great job putting those gates together. And in the next um two weeks or so, or by the end of of the month, early next month, you'll see the side gates. Where you've got the little um guard, other guard pillars there, um, they'll be replaced as well. Um, and they'll get rid of those unsightly posts that continue to go up. Uh, in regards to flagpoles down there, we're looking at the flagpoles there, but um of of a point of note. For the next two weeks, we've already got flagpole to place out the front here, so we have three flagpoles at the front uh front to to raise the flags. Um, and we'll place lighting on there so they can be up there twenty four hours in accordance with flagpole protocol. Um, when it comes to the precinct um lookouts, the intent is to get the lighting and the flags up there before Australia Day. So the staff will be working pretty hard this week to try to get them up there. Um, uh, when it comes to Bennett Oval, um, for those that have been out there, we were able to get the uh disabled car parking in. So that's a, that was a tick in the box, um, we couldn't get Boral out, but we had the use of of the concrete is to get in there to get that stuff done. Um, and you'll note that when Boral came through, we've been able to do the same when it comes to the Y M C A car park. So that's a, that's a big ticket item from us, and from my perspective, the team's worked really well to get that, get that off the ground. And um last but not least, I'll touch on um Blackpoint Staircase, um, that was fantastic. And for the for the team from Durassia to place that in, um, we're going to be looking at them to also put in a bit to to look at the boardwalk down at the uh visitor centre as well. Based on what they've been able to achieve out there, so that was quite a good job. Um, for the next quarter, um, upcoming, we've got B D O coming out to do the um. Uh, the open space and the service review, so that'll drive a lot of what um we look at um in my space into into the rest of the year and into the future. And then that report will be presented to the risk committee in and around April, March period, um, or March, April, sorry, to get it around the right way. Um, and then going forward from there, that'll that'll drive what we're doing, but we'll just continue to get through um our business plan and and what we're trying to achieve from my perspective. Is any question, any further questions?
I have a question about the flag, do we have a, an anti theft device or some method of anti theft fitted to them these days? The ones at their lookout?
Yeah, so, um, yep, to to waterproof it. Um, so the ones out here, yes, and the ones up there, yes. Um, I've asked the team to look at that, um, they're already in place for ones out here, um, they've just broken into them. Um, so the best we can, we've purchased the the flagpoles that have that sort of um infrastructure placed into it.
Councillor Knox?
Couple of quick questions. What's the approximate cost of landfill gas monitoring for the old dump?
Um, I'm going to have to take that on notice because.
Alright, and the second one is, um.
Less granted.
Um, I don't have the exact figure, but it is built into the. Cost of capping, so that we have basically have an allowance in our balance sheet for post closure costs for both of the cells. And so there is an allowance in there each year for for gas, monitoring of gas. And I think we've automated the the lit shape monitoring.
Wouldn't mind knowing what they're, what they're, what they're now, thanks for that. The other one is the um, the work that you've done at Blackpoint's great. Pardon everybody that's involved in that, but the coastal road from False Bay out to the Cuttlefish dive site is not in great shape at the minute. And I realise that the way the road is with um a lot of rocks and the natural bedrock rocks. But it's it's just pretty not great, if we can do something with it, I think we'd be appreciative.
Yeah, absolutely, councillor, and and you know, with our grader down for so long at the end of last year, it took us a while to get back out there. But that's um, that that patrol grading has has recommenced. Um, and at this point in time, that's that's what we're relying on, we're relying on the public to let us know and inform us. And and we are, we are getting the 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 people out there providing that information, but it's very hard, agree.
Uh, councillor Todd, Todd, yes.
Yeah, so a couple of things, um, I go to the rec centre every day and they have been lots and lots of really positive comments. From the people who use the rec centre on the upgrade of the car park and how well it looks and how much easier it is to park. And uh, so lots and lots of positive comments about that, so I think that's great. Uh, I also like to commend the guy who did the gates at Memorial Oval because they do look fantastic. Um, shows a bit of pride, it's nice. Like to get all those photos if we can up on Facebook and show you just some of the stuff. Like to get all those photos if we can up on Facebook and show you just some of the stuff that we've been doing. The other thing too is I wonder, is it worth putting some bits and pieces on Facebook about the vandalism? You know, some of the photographs that were in that report that came through quite eye opening for people. I don't know whether it's worth putting them up there so that people know that, you know, we aren't sitting on our backsides doing nothing. There are other things, we're upgrading the car park, but we're also fixing up things that people have ballsed up basically. I guess my only concern with that would be that people who are causing that damage might think it's pretty cool to see their handiwork on Facebook. I don't know whether it's something that's worth considering, whether the media heroes think it's worth putting some of that stuff up on there about what, what council actually does, don't, and some of the good work that we do.
In response to that councillor, it is the very same subject I discussed with the CEO this afternoon at our weekly catch up. I know there is a view that you keep quiet on vandalism because publicity can create more. I, we discussed a couple of alternative ideas. I have a view and it's open to being shot down. The, the last thing we wanted to do is create a lot of negativity. But I do believe our community needs to know how much money is being wasted. Which is a particular angle that I chose to take when we did the ABC interview on Friday.
Yeah, absolutely.
How disgusting this is. If it's somebody that's having a go at council, all you've done is cost their rope powers between 10 to 20,000 by the time you tally everything up. So we're going to have more discussions about this, how there could be an alternative. I believe that it is time that we work with the media and our own Facebook page to identify particularly which vandalism. Like the photos out at Point Lowly, obviously somebody with a four wheel drive has decided they have the right to drive wherever they want to, to park down right on rocks to, and they've decided this is coming out, it's stopping me.
I just feel like.
And I think if we can relate back to the residents, the rope pass, that's your money. But yes, you've got to be careful, particularly what vandalism you do publicise.
This might be more likely to take down the number plate and send the information through and they.
I think there is the potential to try to get the community, this is a community issue, not a council issue. Council can't have cameras everywhere. Yeah, we've, when there's been different things happening down at the foreshore, we should have cameras on the jetty. We should have cameras outside the visitor centre pod. We should have them further up. Every time there is something, we should have more cameras. So I'm hoping that over time, we can create some positive initiatives to sell, or not sell, but to promote those messages as well. A very valid question.
On that note, Mayor Fox, if I may, that's, that's all right. You know, a perfect example of what you're sort of getting at was the fencing around Jubilee Park. I spent $20,000 before the show, but in 96 hours, that $20,000 was broken again. So what I've done is I've bought a trail cam at this stage. I'm working with the police closely and everything that happens that ends up in their intelligence report. So then they do more patrols out of Point Lowly and so on. So we're building that working relationship with the police from my perspective because it frustrates me as well. And the money that I have to spend and trying to justify that money. So what I'm looking at is the trail cams and I work closely with the police because they're a lot cheaper than us putting in permanent cameras. And look to, to find hotspots where we can try to get that evidence for the police. But that's, you know, just the initiative we're trying to do now.
I think it's worth on our Facebook posts when we put, you know, Hammock Hill's closed, this is what's happened, we fixed it. If you saw anything or you know the person who's responsible for this, call the council or call the police. Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And just one final comment on the, for everybody's interest on the rec center. Lots and lots of really good feedback as well on the alternative programs that have been offered. And all the old ducks from Aqua who were kicking up a stink because the pool was going to be closed. Absolutely love their new classes and are hoping that when the pools open, they can do their new classes and Aqua as well. So that's.
Well, thank you very much for that councillor. Councillor Inglis?
Colin, the escape road from Point Lowly to Fitzgerald Bay, where are we at with that? Has that been determined who's responsible? Because one, you can, you can't drive along. Basically, it's nearly impossible. There's a lot of really good camping spots and tourism spots through there that people can't get to. And it is an absolute mess. So I know we've talked about it in the past, but are we putting any pressure back on Santos if it's their responsibility to fix it or is it council's problem? Because at present it's impossible, basically.
Um, I, look, I haven't got a straight answer for you, but I know that we, we went for a drive down there and I know the hotspots, it is drivable. But some spots definitely not, especially if you've got a caravan. And I'm absolutely, you know, on board when it comes to the camping side of things. That's something that we're still looking into from my perspective. I haven't pursued that any, any further, but I'll hand over to the director. She may have more to pass on.
Yes, thank you for the question councillor. And the, no money has been spent on that access road for quite some time. The previous agreement with Santos, they were actually providing money into the council for works to, to maintain that particular road. We, it is not a council road, so it is not, not a road that council has within its program from a maintenance point of view or a patrol grading perspective. We do need to do some examination as to what would it take to actually bring that road into a position that is more usable. But in so doing, we would need to have a conversation. Is that something that we want to do or not do? Should people be camping down in that area? Should council have, have signage? Should council have facilities in that area or not? And that's a, a conversation that does need to come back to council following our discussions with Santos.
Because that road initially was put in, that was a safety escape route from Santos. Mate, if Santos blows up now, everybody's dying because you're only skating on that road.
Yeah. Can I add to the, that response as well that there is a master plan for that whole Corbin, I've an hydrogen hub precinct currently being progressed by the state government. Because very soon we won't just be talking about Santos needing an escape route. We'll be talking about multiple other development proponents also needing an escape route. So I think the master plan that the state is managing should address that issue, including the financial contribution. And the question of care and control of that road. Noting that part of that road may actually be in an area that council doesn't actually have access to.
I understand that just, this is the here and now, the, the master plan is the easy way probably. But before anything, any maniflame gets done to that road, that road needs addressing now because it is. For anybody that's out living in shack or staying there camping, that's supposed to be a safety escape route if things turn to shit to Santos. And at present, nobody's escaping on that road.
We'll certainly be having a look at it and bring it back to council for further discussion.
Councillor Simpson?
Do we have any idea of cost of illegal dumping compared to the cost of vandalism? Which is costing you more?
That's a good, we might have to sit down more for that because vandalism is a bit. Vandalism is a bit harder to track because it is spread out across our budget areas. Things happen on a day to day basis. It's people's time. It's, you know, a legal dumping is a bit easier to measure because it's the cost of the service provider that we use to pick that up. And the main cost is actually, you know, the, the waste that we have to then dump. So, you know, legal dumping is probably costing us, you know, $160,000 a year, maybe a bit more. Some of the figures that, you know, Colin's looking at on big items, you know, it can add up pretty quickly over, over a year and over all of our sites. So yeah, we can always bring an answer back on that, but it's hard to compare. Yeah, councillor, I just signed up on a contract for corrections at $33,000. And they do a lot of the graffiti. They easily find it and get rid of it. And some of our laneways assist in that. So that's, that's one figure and it's not a huge figure. But that's, that's the one that I just signed up on recently.
Councillor Knox?
Two little things, I guess. The first thing is there is some signage out on Lowly, which indicates the back road we're talking about. Is the emergency exit for Santos workers and chappies that are out there. And the other thing is that if we're spending $150,000 a year cleaning up on illegal dumping, maybe we should consider alternatives for this and that money. In other words, can we allow people to have two hard waste collections a year? Can we get out there and promote the hard waste collection that people are entitled to? Because I suspect a lot of people aren't aware of that. Just some things to think about because 150 grands is a fair bit of money. You can do a fair bit of that.
Thank you councillor.
And in response to that, we have identified illegal dumping as being a significant focus area for us over the coming six to 12 months. And we will be working together with Violia, with the regulatory services team, with the depot team in terms of what might be some of the alternative strategies or strategies that we can deploy to actually reduce illegal dumping. One of the things whereby where we do find illegally dumped waste. Put some crime scene tape around it, identify that this matter is being investigated so that we are actually showing the community out there that, that this is not just going, going without any notice. And as I said, work with Violia to see how we can actually reduce some of the illegal dumping happening.
Just a little bit of context around legal dumping. One of our neighbouring cities have got a problem, it's probably going to be in excess of 350 grand to clean up Port Augusta up beyond the Davenport community. You want to see illegal dumping? My lord, you have got no idea. And illegal dumping is not only, it's not only a problem for us, it's a problem for every council in the state. And various, and to David's point, two hard base collections is not going to make one order of difference. Because our base collection is about getting rid of hard rubbish, you know, an old fridge or a lounge or a curb. The stuff that's getting dumped out in the, in the scrub is, a lot of its garden waste is just huge and tons loads of rubbish. And it, and it's not unique to us. I mean, I work 11 councils around the state and everyone's got the same problem we have. And probably we're at the bottom end of cost comparative to some of our neighbours. So, and even small regional places, you know, the Kimber Cow Clues, they suffer from it as well. So it's not a unique problem for us, but it is a problem going forward for everybody.
Deputy Mayor Pond?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I love these reports that we get. The information that we get is golden. And I think it's good for our community to see that it's not just the day to day business that councillor going about. It is those things that pop up as well. But I just was asking, if you take into consideration, I've brought this up a few times. When you're looking at alternatives and costings and whatnot, can we look at an alternative such as a voucher for a free dump day per citizen or per rate payer or and just have a deep dive into that. I know it costs money. The one day doesn't work because every man and his dog comes and then you've got a backlog for six hours. But if each resident gets one voucher per year, you're not going to have the backlog. Everyone there at the same time, but we might get rid of some of that $160,000 worth of dumping and vandalism and whatnot. Just something to take into consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Border?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to tell me his point and councillor Knox's point, sorry, deputy mayor pond and councillor Knox's point. What is behind, do we, do we know what is behind the illegal dumping? If it doesn't make much difference, what is, is it the person's trying to make a statement? Do they not know about rubbish removal? Is it the fact that they don't think there's enough accessibility to the dump? Do, do we know what the driving factors are?
Thanks for the question councillor. Look, without a crystal ball, I'd just say it costs too much to go to Viola, to be honest. You know, this carpet literally just down one of the laneways here that I've noticed off of Mill Street. A whole carpet roll, just strange things like that that you find just lying around the place. So, and you know, people do fencing and they just leave the fence post with the concrete out the back. I put the tape around it, it's gone now, but a lot of the time I have to get other organisations to, to remove it. Obviously, because it just takes too long and it's hard to prove a lot of this illegal dumping for our compliance crews. So it is frustrating. Yes, it's, it's hard to say. And I guess on that note, my, my question or my point is really about getting, are we barking up the right tree? With a free council day with two rubbish road, hard waste collections, perhaps we are, but I just think. Yeah, well, sorry, the vouchers, sorry, my apologies. So the vouchers, the ideas that we've mentioned today or tonight, is that barking up the right tree? Just what do we do before we launch down that particular path? I just want to make sure we're on the right path.
Thank you councillor. You're off. Right. Right, no further questions. I haven't got one because I raised this with the CEO. And I'm expecting something will come back to us in one of the budget reviews. But my question to him today was how are we going to go coping with our spray teams and our mowers, considering the huge issue we've got, particularly with Caltraw? So I don't expect an answer, but he did indicate we're going to have to look at that, probably at a budget review. Thank you for all that. Item sixteen notices of. Oh, sorry, sorry. Okay, what would I do without you? Could I have deputy mayor pond, are you moving that report and councillor Inglis, you're seconding it? I'll put the motion those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Now, item sixteen notices of motions, sixteen point one, we have a notice of motion from councillor Knox. We have a recommendation. Councillor Knox, you're moving the recommendation seconded by councillor border. I'll put the motion those in favour.
Can I just speak to the motion please?
Yes, certainly.
This all came to light just a week ago. And I attended a meeting with the discharge planner at the hospital. Who advised that in the last three years that she'd worked there, only 15 people from Waila had been able to be accommodated directly into the aged care facilities in Waila. The rest had to go out of town. That came straight from her mouth. She said in the past week when we had the meeting, that five people have had to go out of town. I've got a family member who's had to go out of town to Port Augusta. And I visited the place that that family member is in Port Augusta. And I find it very, very similar to Annie Lockwood, yet we can't use Annie Lockwood. So I think one of the questions that we need to put to Helping Hand, and I accept it's not their problem, this all happened before they took over. Now, and I really want to work with Helping Hand, but I suspect that Annie, Annie Lockwood might be able to be modified to meet the requirements. But I'm, I'm really happy to see us receiving and going ahead with the meeting. I know that the staff have been proactive already. And, but I would hope that when we have the meeting, it's not part of a council meeting. And we've got some decent time to look at the situation and make some good suggestions.
Thank you councillor. We have the motion being seconded. I'll put the motion those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Item sixteen point two, a notice of motion from councillor border to do with supermarket shopping trolleys. Whose name came up first councillor Knox or councillor border? He's down the bottom of mine. You're moving councillor border?
Yes.
And you're seconding at councillor Knox? Do you wish to speak to it? I'll put the motion those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Item seventeen, no, our questions on notice, there are no. Item eighteen, questions without notice. Do we have any questions without notice? Councillor Knox?
Sorry about this, but I've got a couple. The first one is, are there any further information regarding the accommodation requirements for GFG in terms of cycling? And in terms of design and style of the, of the cabins or houses?
Hmm, I'll provide a response that I don't believe that GFG have presented any further information directly to council. We know that GFG are talking to the state government about potential state government sites and the broader accommodation need that the Office of Hydrogen Power is also looking at. Which then in turn brings in renewal SA. So unless the director of city growth is privy to any other information, I don't believe we received any further information direct from GFG regarding their housing plans. Dave, have you got anything?
No, the only, only additional information I have is that GFG are in town today and tomorrow, considering the foreshore hotel and its capacity for them. That's all I'll add.
Okay. The other, the other question is, we did mention a while back about. Okay. The other, the other question is, um, we did mention a while back about campsite booking systems for our, our coastline. I'm aware now that, um, I think pretty much all the councils to the south of us down there, potentially have put them already in place. I'm just wondering how, how we are going because I, I can see it as being a necessity going forward in the future. And it's a cost to us as well in maintaining these places and it would help to offset the maintenance.
Yeah. Uh, the, the city activation team have now got it on their agenda, um, to apply to those sites where we are not required to have an illure in place. Um, and they'll commence that, that negotiation and get those sites established. We're pretty keen to look at sites that perhaps haven't been considered before. Um, we've made early, early discussions around Tandera acting as a, a, a stay for RVs. Um, for those who view follow those music festivals, like the one that was held in Manham this weekend. They offered the Manham Oval for those attending the music festival to camp, $10 a night. Um, so we'd like to consider some other options as well, but, um, it's high on the agenda now.
And if I can add to that, that, um, as part of the budget deliberations, council will also be asked to revisit the subject of boat, boat launching fees. Um, given that the book easy system is used by a number of those other councils, um, to, um, get a fee for service from people using, um, marinas and boat ramps in other L G I jurisdictions. And we'll do that as part of the budget process.
Councillor Border.
Bus stop at the beach. Is there any update on that? And I have been, um, spoken to about it, just given the close of the rec centre, swimming option, obviously it's not apples with apples, but in any, in any case, any update on that?
Yes, there's ongoing conversations there. The process to get a bus stop in place is more complex than you would think. And it's a, an application to the state government on behalf of our public transport provider. In really simplistic terms, the attraction has to be developed further than what it is currently for the business case to stack up. Um, of course, if we're successful with our grant, we commence the foreshore redevelopment works, we'll meet that brief hands down. And, uh, hopefully we'll get two bus stops down there. Um, but it's very much on everyone's, um, discussions are taking place, council's applying the pressure it needs to. Perhaps in your networks though, it's, it's not a council, uh, we, we can't just make a call that we want a bus stop here, there. It's a private commercial decision and then a transport permitting process that's involved to provide that. So we can influence it, but, um, we're not the, uh, we can't just decide it's what we want and make it happen. Um, unless we go out, purchase a bus, go through all the permitting and, and procedures of becoming a public transport provider, which we don't want to do. Hot tip.
Thank you. That's okay. Here I was thinking it was as simple as just, just them calling Deses and saying, can you just pop another bus stop on the end of your route? Um, I think I'm allowed in sharing that idea. So it's good that you mentioned amongst our networks to disseminate the information that it's a state government application and a much more involved process than what I just described. So now that's good. Um, residential rezoning, what's the process to rezone the car yards on Forsyth Street between Sharp Street and Wood Street? I've been here for six years and would terraced my police. Thank you councillor Inglis. What's the process? What do we think? Is that a good idea? To rezone those car yards that I'm sure we haven't been used since Steel City Ford were there? Um, how do we get them activated?
I think we'll take that issue up as part of the discussion regarding the citywide master plan, uh, which the state government has commissioned. That will look at the type of land uses that are appropriate across our city. And I think that would be the vehicle to, um, look at whether any rezonings required, uh, as opposed to try and provide you a detailed response in relation to individual streets, um, um, tonight.
Thank you, CEO. Uh, Deputy Mayor Pond.
My apologies. Sorry, I did have one more question. Um, so QR codes, they're very popular with KISAB. And any works that the council is doing, I just want to put the idea out there of having a QR code on a physical sign located where the seaweed was dumped, where the oil spill was, whatever it might be in the future, where someone rather than going on Facebook and going, oh my gosh, this is so terrible. If we're proactive and we go, no, no, they can just scan a QR code, which then links to a, an evergreen council page that just gives that live update like what we're already doing on Facebook. But instead of having someone having to go and manually check Facebook, they just scan the QR code and it takes them straight to the, the website page from the council's website, which gives them that live update. So the question I guess is, can, is that possible? What would need to happen to make that happen?
I think, uh, administration would need to take that on notice. I don't think they can answer it now.
Possibly it's further promotion of the local government My Services app. So the app is, is what we promote is on everyone's phone rather than signage and individual QR codes. I think in reverse, if we encourage the app to be on as many people's phone as possible, there is a reporting mechanism on that that you can use and then live feed to whatever topic. Uh, I think we'd use an existing, um, application.
Yep, and that's cool. And I'm thinking of something physical on the spot. So, you know, road closed, okay? But then road closed, scan here to, for more information, whatever linked to. It's just something where someone doesn't drive past it and go, oh, another thing out of service or.
Um, Cathy just, um, asked me to point out, we did do that on the foreshore beach closure signs, advanced warning of the beach closure for the sand replenishment. Put a QR, QR code to the website. So, um, and then greater across.
Right out of you Cathy.
It's the comms team, the comms team.
The comms team.
When we do renew signs, we attempt to put a QR code on every one of them too.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you.
Councillor Campbell.
That's okay, what I was going to say to me.
Deputy Mayor Pond.
Yeah, um, I've seen that we've got our events workshop coming up, which I'm really keen for. Um, but I've noticed it's on a Monday and we discussed last year about having it on a Saturday for four hours. Just wondering if there's an issue with having it on the weekend as discussed.
I think probably the key issue will be just the accessibility to staff. Um, um, I'd have to check, take on notice whether we can get the relevant staff to attend a, a weekend workshop. Um, we, we have flagged previously that we're looking at the fifth of February for that workshop. We are going to have to move it to the 12th of February because one of the key staff, um, associated with the events, um, team is not available on that day. So if I can just take that question on notice and then we'll round back to you in terms of whether a weekend session is, is doable.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Moving on to item nineteen, motions without notice. Do we have any motions without notice? No motions without notice, moving on. Item twenty, we have no confidential items. This brings us to twenty, item twenty one, the close of our meeting. On that basis, with the time now at five minutes past seven, you have a list of our meeting dates coming up.
If we change to the 12th.
Yes, as the CEO just said, the fifth will change to the 12th for the council member briefing session. On that note, as I said, at five minutes past seven, I thank you for your attendance. Many more meetings coming up during the year and I'll declare the meeting closed. Thank you.